Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We please have a roll call of the holdover board members.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Benz?
Here.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Davis Simon?
Here.
Student reps? And Paige Weaver?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain nominations for temporary chairperson. Do I hear a nomination for temporary chairperson? Do I hear a nomination for temporary chairperson?
Can our staff continue?
No.
Okay.
Does it have to be a holdover?
It has to be a holdover board member, yes.
I nominate you.
Gail Rhodes has been nominated for temporary chairperson. Is there any other nomination for temporary chairperson? Is there any other nomination for temporary chairperson?
Well, she has to be from the existing holders.
I understand that. We'll entertain a motion.
Is it me, Jason, or somebody not elected?
Yes.
Me, Jason, or Kenneth?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. Gail can't do it. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, I didn't ask if they had to be holdover.
That's right.
Our nomination for Mike.
Okay, Mr. Alt nominates Mr. Benz. Are there any other nominations? Is there a second?
Yeah, I need a second for election.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I need a second.
All right. Okay, so we have Mr. Benz nominated. Could we have a motion that Mr. Benz be our temporary chairperson? You can't move.
I'll make one.
Thank you, Mr. Polakowski. In a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Mr. Benz is our temporary chairperson. At this time, we will have the reading of the certificates of election. County of Westmoreland, and all of these have been signed by the Board of Elections, Charles Anderson, Tyler Courtney, and Ted Copus. We, the undersigned, of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county, it appears that Robert Calero was elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county afore said. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county, it appears that Levi Miller was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county afore said. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county, it appears that Gail Rhodes was elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county afore said. And we, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at municipal elections held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county, it appears that Cheryl Byers Shipley was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county afore said. So that brings us to the reading of the list of all legally elected school directors. So the school directors for the next period of time, two years, will be Mr. Kenneth Alt, Mr. James Beistall, Mr. Michael Benz, Mr. Robert Calero, Mrs. Amy Love, Mr. Levi Miller, Mr. Jason Polakowski, Mrs. Gail Rhodes, and Mrs. Cheryl Byers Shipley. Your honor, would you administer the oath of office? We have the Honorable Charles Moore, District magistrate, here to administer the oath of office to the newly elected school directors.
Do you want us to come together?
Mr. Moore.
Or are you helping? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Moore, the magistrate, district judge, at District 10310. It's my pleasure to come here tonight and to perform the oath of office. We'll start with Mr. Calero, please. Do you please stand, sir? Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of your office with fidelity?
I do.
Congratulations. Mr. Miller? Mr. Levi Miller, do you solemnly swear, if you will raise your right hand, please, that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of your office with fidelity?
I will affirm that strongly.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Where's Gail? I got her. Gail, please raise your right hand. Gail Rhodes, do you solemnly swear that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of your office with fidelity?
I do.
I want to raise your right hand. Cheryl Byers Shipley, do you solemnly swear that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of this office with fidelity?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, and...
Mr. Moore, thank you very much for being on the board.
I wish you all the best of luck. I spent, what, was it eight fond years in the 80s on this board, and I appreciate all the hard work and the service that you give to the community, the taxpayers, and most importantly, our children. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Benz? We have the election of the president of the board. Do we have nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Alton.
Mr. Polakowski nominates Mr. Miller.
I'd nominate Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Rhodes nominates Mr. Benz. Any more nominations? Do we have a motion to close the nominations for the appointment of president?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Voice vote for nomination, I'm sorry, those nominations for the office are closed. We have voice vote for closing nominations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Voice vote to close nomination for president?
We just did that.
So roll call, vote for election of president for the board.
Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Calero votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Miller votes for?
Levi Miller.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Miller.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Shipley votes for?
Mr. Miller.
Motion passes four to three for Mr. Benz.
Michael, light up. Do you want to come up here? Come on up here.
I just want to say thank you for your support, and I'm looking forward to a good year of getting many positive things done for the district and for the children. And I want to thank Mr. Miller for this past year of service, and just thank you for the great job he did, and just keep moving forward and plugging away. Election of vice president of the board. Do we have any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Cheryl Shipley.
Mr. Miller nominates Mrs. Shipley. Any more nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second. Second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion's closed. We don't need a voice vote. Voice vote, can we have a motion for...
Unanimous ballot.
Unanimous ballot by the secretary? Motion by Mrs. Shipley. Second. Second by Mr. Alt. So all those in favor of Mrs. Shipley being the vice president, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. School board meetings for the 2014 calendar year. Do we have a motion? I'm going to read it. I usually do. That's what I'm asking, yeah. We'll entertain a motion that the monthly planning sessions of the Southmoreland Board of Education and the monthly regular business sessions of the Southmoreland Board of Education be held during each month during 2014 as per the attached schedule at 7:00 p.m., with the annual reorganization meeting scheduled for Monday, December 4th at 7:00 p.m. in the Southmoreland Middle School, 200 Scotty Way, Scottsdale, PA, and that the secretary is authorized and directed to give public notice, including advertising the schedule of public meetings, not less than three days before the first meeting. And you'll notice, if you look at the calendar that I sent out for you, July, we have one meeting on the 10th. Other than that, we pretty much follow our regular schedule, the first and second Thursdays of the month. With the exception of June, we have a planning meeting on the 5th, and we have a voting meeting on the 19th. We are hoping that the state has a budget finalized by the 19th, so that we'll be able to finalize our budget at that meeting, too. That's why we put that one back a little bit. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Board appointments, legislative chairperson. It is necessary to appoint a representative from the Southmoreland School Board to represent the school districts in PSBA's Legislative Action Program at county-level meetings. She or he should present legislative updates to the board regularly and should prompt the board to submit suggested items for the PSBA legislative platform. Do we have any motions? Who currently holds that position? Legislative platform. I believe that was Mr. Miller. Were you the legislative chair?
I was.
Last year. Yes. So nominations?
I nominate Mr. Miller.
Mrs. Rhodes nominates Mr. Miller. Do you accept?
Mr. Miller, do you accept?
I'm willing to accept.
Sure.
Any more nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Calero. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven with two absent. Can we take that voice vote to cast unanimous ballot by the secretary for Mr. Miller to be legislative chairperson? All those in favor say aye. Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. PSBA Regional Cabinet. The Executive Board of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association has expanded representation on the regional cabinets to include a representative from every school board in the region. The representative will be this board's key contact with PSBA and share reports and other relevant education-related information at regular meetings of the Southmoreland School Board. Nominations for this appointment?
I nominate Mr. Allen.
Mr. Polakowski nominates Mrs. Rhodes. Do you accept?
Yes.
Any more nominations? Mr. Miller nominates, we close nomination. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Do we have a motion to cast unanimous ballot for Mrs. Rhodes as PSBA Regional Cabinet? Motion by Mr. Polakowski. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Representative to the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, do we have a motion? A representative needs to be appointed to the Board of Directors of the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number Seven for a term to expire June 30, 2016. Nominations for the appointment of WIU representatives to the Board of Directors are now open. Mrs. Rhodes nominates Mrs. Love. And she has said that she would accept that. I have been told. Do we have any nominations? Do we have a motion to close? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes. We have a second to close.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Do we have a motion to cast unanimous ballot for Mrs. Love as representative to Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Board of Directors? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Representative to the Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center Board. A representative needs to be appointed to the Board of Directors of the Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center for a term that will expire December 2015. Nominations for the board, for the appointment of CWC TC representative to the Board of Directors are now open. Nominations? Mr. Miller nominates Mr. Polakowski. Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley. Second by Mr. Calero. Did I hear that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Do we have a motion to cast the unanimous ballot for Mr. Polakowski as representative to the Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center Board? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Newspaper of general circulation. It is recommended that the board designate the Daily Courier, whose office is located at 127 to 129 Apple Street, Connel'sville, PA, as the daily newspaper of general circulation, in which district legal advertisements will be placed in accordance with Section 106 of the Public School Code and School District Policy Guide Number Five. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mr. Calero. All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Do we have a motion to adjourn a reorganization meeting in convenience of special meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero with two absent. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Miller?
I'm here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Student representatives, Davis Simon? Paige Weaver?
Here.
Seven present, two absent, and two student reps. Citizens' comments, please. We have one citizen comment. There's no name on it, but the individual lives at 628 Homestead Avenue, Jan, WU. The topics of his... Go ahead.
Hi, guys. I've been away for a year and unable to come to meetings. Of course, I kept in touch online. But I was governed regularly, as you remember, and the definition of insanity is going the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. And my wife said that, and so hearing the back, back, both. I believe public comment here is an essential element to the board, in part because this is where the outside opinion is injected into the group thing, which is inescapable. And we all have blind spots. And the school system is only as viable as the consequences of people that support it. And for me, public education is the foundation for society, because how easy it is to control people if you control the educational process. The big problem for me and for other people that come up this board is we get to be over a cynical year of introspection, and this showed me that, you know, the cynical, we get syrastic, we get pessimistic. There's a popular saying that a cynic is not merely one who reads the bitter lessons of the past, but he is one who is prematurely disappointed with the future. A critic, on the other hand, is different, and he does not necessarily live with the negativity of the future. And I'm a critic, and that's my contribution to society and people, as well. With the exception of Dr. Lomond, I have found that criticism, my criticism really hasn't been received well, and I'm hoping we improve that starting tonight. It's been a long time since I've been here. But the biggest problem I face, I face as a critic of public education and other things is really philosophical. I believe that Southmoreland public education are failed institutions, just as I believe the same about our criminal justice system, about our healthcare system, about our defense spending, our energy policies. I'm not saying just sluggish and maybe weak, but you know, I think they're fundamentally failing and declining society. And with my support for this statement, we have a populace, generations of public education graduates that support the most expensive, yet the most expensive healthcare system in the world, yet we're 13th on the development list, and we're dead as a country, gone bankrupt city. We have these, we're all witnessing the deterioration of our Bill of Rights, and your proof and I belong is if you come up with test scores, public schools are measuring themselves largely on test scores. And I'll address that later at the end of the, at the beginning of tonight, if I run out of time now. I don't share a libertarian approach that's called here that starting the system of money will correct the flaws. And I don't feel that left alone, the systems are correct themselves. There are too many vested interests clinging to the power. So we need critical personalities, not vocally supportive personalities, who will always see the sunshine to enact the change that I see as necessary. Society discourages this type of critical thinking. And Socrates said, unexamined life is really not worth living, and I hold that from an institutional level also. Schools must be prepared to understand critical thinking and prepare anyone for society with everyone. At best, there are amounts of vocational training void of ethical considerations. Law student, narrowing curriculum is the liberal, small L, liberal education that allows flowering to be online in the care of a teacher who is a preacher teacher. I'm not on the same. I'm too pragmatic to think that I want to persuade this board of the terrific reporter of the viewers and parents that watch these meetings online or on cable. And I don't think that student representatives are going to hear the message. I speak that the 10 to 20, 10 to 20, so high school students still have that spirit of liberty in them. So my message really here is to those students to wake up, stand up, and do something. And I'll give them some ideas later in my time.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. You know, we just can't be honest about the privatization of our, why can't we just be honest about the privatization, privatization of our educational systems? Our students have just become a property. At the end of the meeting, I'd like to talk about Mrs. L. Beverly's comments last week and the testing in the Monsanto grant that you've been closely receiving.
Thank you. Do we approve the minutes? It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the November... A little misprint there. That would be the... The November 7th and 14th meetings, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Miller. Questions on the motion? No questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Finance, fund accounts, please. Yeah, your desks this evening, you received the bills payable accounts payable for November 13 report, and we would entertain a motion that those be approved, please. Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Just a comment. Normally, you would have those much earlier, but with the Thanksgiving holiday and the end of the month coming, when it didn't, the board meeting by statute having to be this evening, we got them to us as quickly as we could. And in the future, you know, you'll always have those on the Tuesday prior to the meeting for your review. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Seeing the whole business, new business, please. SRC E-rate procurement and operation of a digital, least digital transmission service at gigabit speed. It's recommended that the board authorize the Menneson City School District to be the lead applicant for the Southern Region E-rate Consortium to submit the FCC Form 471 and other E-rate forms to the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal Service Administrative Company on behalf of the Southmoreland School District for the 2014-2015 funding year. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, several years ago, we became members of the consortium that provided high-speed internet service to the schools in this portion of the county. And Menneson has been the lead applicant. In other words, they take care of all the applications and all the paperwork on behalf of all of the districts who are in the consortium, but we need to renew that every year, so we ask you to do that this evening for us. Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt? Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, the motion passes seven zero with two absent.
Yes, the motion passes seven, zero with two absent.
The next motion deals with Rusgrim Field, as you know. You know, the field was flooded, and we've been working through a lot of processes and formalities to get this project underway, and we finally had approval, as I shared with you at the last meeting, for some architectural design. You approved Eccles Architecture. Eccles has been on site twice, and they are in the process of writing specifications. And we would like the board to authorize administration to go ahead and advertise and begin the bidding process as soon as those specifications are finished. What we will do is we will send them to even, perhaps even have an informational meeting before that process goes out. But in terms of a formal vote, we would like permission to go ahead and get that process underway as soon as we can in terms of getting a bid.
Motion?
Make motion.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask again, we're not paying for anything other than a deductible at this point, right?
For, for the restoration of the field.
For anything.
It's only the deductible. All right, now, if, if the recommendation comes back to do something that's preventive, that's outside the scope of the damage, we'll bring that to you for your approval. But the repair of the field itself, we're only responsible for the deductible.
At this point, are there any additional fees?
I haven't, I haven't seen the recommendations, yeah.
Didn't we not talk about that? I thought they were covering some of those things.
They're not covering.
Or it wasn't above the field.
No. They may cover some curbing, but that will be the extent of it.
Are we asking to do anything outside of what the insurance covers?
We've asked the architect to prepare alternates for diversion in the event that we'd have another catastrophic event like this, so that would be an alternate.
And that will cost us money?
If you approve it, it will.
Those options will be given to us at that point.
Yes. Yeah, well, those will be bid as alternates.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven, zero with two absent.
An item that's not on your agenda is something that we need to discuss briefly in executive session. It's a personnel item, and I believe Mr. Potonic has a couple of executive session items as well. So at this time, we would entertain a motion to recess to executive session.
Any motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mrs. Shipley. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All of us second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero with two absent.
We have two items that are not on the agenda that we'd like you to consider this evening. On the first item, we've had a request from high school administration and the high school play advisors that Madeline Nelson be approved as volunteer advisor for the high school play for this school year. Would entertain a motion to that effect, please.
Do we have a motion? First by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions?
Public comment.
Public comment? Due to this motion, can you speak on this motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven, zero with two absent.
The next item we have is a resolution to settle, petition to settle claim for petition of the Tax Claim Bureau, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, Self Free and Clear Property, 220, Bessama Road Investors LP. Mr. Potonic, I'll let you provide an executive summary of this motion, this resolution, and then we'll entertain a motion for it.
This is to settle the litigation in number 5346 of 2012, and it would require the owner, by and through its attorney, to pay $3,000 towards a possible claim of interest and penalty of $11,954. And they would withdraw all claims as to the 2009 taxes or the other interest and penalties that were collected. The monies would be divided by the Tax Claim Bureau in proportion to the millages which the school district, township, and county bear for the years involved. Each district in proportion to all three of those. And our share of that would be approximately $2,000. But the bottom line is, what it would do is free up approximately more than $20,000 of interest and penalties that are frozen by a court order while this litigation between the owner and the Tax Claim Bureau was going on. And so in the interest of getting our money quicker, rather than having to wait out all that litigation and any uncertainty attached to it, we negotiated this $3,000 number, and I'm recommending that you agree to the form of the resolution so that it can get resolved. It's still dependent upon the township and the county approving it, however. So if they didn't agree, then that case would just go on.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions on the motion? Questions from the audience on this topic? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven, zero, and two absent. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, the only item that I have is actually something that I'm not going to talk about. Mr. Lee and Dr. Scott had the honor and privilege of representing Southmoreland in Washington, DC a couple of weeks ago, where Southmoreland Elementary School received the official National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Award. Mr. Lee has a plaque and a flag that he would like to share with you. And Dr. Scott, at an administrative meeting a couple of weeks ago, presented the administration with a very nice overview of some of the things that were going on there, so I'm going to call upon him to tell a little bit about, about what he saw there and his perceptions as well. So, Mr. Lee?
First of all, I just wanted to say what an honor it was to go to Washington, DC on November 17, 18, and 19, and have the opportunity to talk with principals from all over the United States. And that's probably why my voice is the way it's sounding, because we did a lot of talking, a lot of sharing ideas with each other. But while we were there, we had the opportunity to represent our school, as Dr. Mollmar said. And part of the ceremony on Tuesday was to present each of the 286 schools in the United States that were national blue ribbon schools, a flag which I'd like, if my principal helpers could help me, to unfold the flag. And we're gonna, this flag is gonna be, we're gonna hang this outside under our American flag, so that people, as they come up, they will see that SES is a national blue ribbon school for 2013. And then also, they, we got that as we were coming off the stage, but going onto the stage, we received the plaque which has the Department of Education logo, and it says "Southmoreland Elementary School, Scottsdale, Pennsylvania is recognized as a national blue ribbon school for 2013." And each one got to go up on stage, receive the plaque, and have our picture taken with the Director of the National Blue Ribbon Schools. The lady's name is Abba Kumi. And today, the pictures of us doing that just appeared online, so I have some other pictures that we took. I'm gonna pass this around, and while that's, those are going around, Dr. Scott, if you'd like to share your thoughts.
Before Dr. Scott starts, I just have to say, although Southmoreland Elementary School received this award, Southmoreland Primary Center is not eligible to receive such an award because they only encompass kindergarten and first grade, but this is their award as well. They, they got the students ready for learning, they laid a very strong foundation so that the students, when they arrived at SES, were ready to learn and ready to absorb and do all the things that went on there. So really and truly, this award needs to be shared and recognized in terms of both buildings at the elementary level.
Correct. And one other thing before Dr. Scott talks, throughout the conference, they had, any time there was an activity where the large group were gathering, we were, we had to submit two pictures of, action pictures of students in our school, and then they would, as each, as the slideshow was going, there were, each school had their name and the two pictures of our school. These two pictures, I'll send them around also, but these are the two pictures, these are actually our students from SES, engaging in good work. So, and I'll put the picture of us on the stage on top.
Thank you, John.
First of all, I want to, we were allowed to send two people, so first I want to thank John Lee for asking me to attend, and I want to thank Dr. Mollmar for allowing me to go rather than going himself, and giving me the opportunity. I hope, I hope I have other highlights in my career, but this certainly was, 20-some years in, the highlight of my career. Over 280 public, private, and charter schools from 45 states, the District of Attorney, and Department of Defense were represented alongside Southmoreland Elementary School. That's 280-some out of 185,000 schools in the nation. We received the award in the same room where Bill Clinton famously joined the band in playing the saxophone during his first inaugural ball. Secretary of Education, Artie Duncan, delivered the keynote address. And I have to say that John Lee and I are both very moved and humbled to represent the teachers, administrators, students, staff, parents, board, and community of the Southmoreland School District. It truly is an amazing honor. And I do say district and not school, because I really do believe that this is a district honor. Jack mentioned the primary center. I believe, yeah, I was a principal there years ago. I think the primary center is a world-class K1 facility, and I'm so proud of the professionalism, the high standards, and the way that those folks nurtured kids at that school. And they certainly share the honor. This whole process of trying to take what was a failing school district, and high-poverty failing school district, and trying to turn us around, you know, this all started at the middle school 10 years ago. And last year, and this year also, our middle school was one of 10 schools in the nation recognized by the National Association of Secondary School Principals as a breakthrough school. And despite having a large percentage, over 50% of economically disadvantaged students, our academic achievement far exceeds national averages. Unfortunately, our high school was in school improvement one status last year. We had to submit a school improvement plan to the Department of Ed. This year, not getting a whole lot of attention yet, but very proud to note that, according to the Department of Education, the high school is a passing school this year. We are a school on the move. Our reading achievement levels on a state assessment topped 80% for the first time ever at the high school. And last week, we learned that the high school has earned the designation as a national model of a professional learning community at work. There are only four schools in the Commonwealth to have such a designation: Southmoreland Primary Center, Southmoreland Elementary, Southmoreland Middle, Southmoreland High School. One of the great things about being down in Washington, DC, we had sessions where we met with all the teachers and principals and other leaders from around the world, really, Department of Defense, and we had to share, why are you guys unique? What makes you a blue ribbon school? And it was very affirming to hear some of the themes. A lot of the schools talked about their school climate, what they're trying to instill on kids, climates that are grounded in effort-based learning. Good schools, we found, really like to have mantras. From South Carolina High School, hard work pays off. That's what they promote in their school culture. Nebraska Elementary School, when you do good things, good things happen. Do the right thing, from an Ohio middle school. And then, Secretary of Education, you know, last year, all of our teachers, K-12, in our book studies with their principals, read a book called Mindset by Carol Dweck, a Stanford University researcher. We read Mindset because we really want to bring to our culture the value of effort-based learning. Don't have a fixed mindset, everyone can learn. And here we had Artie Duncan in his keynote address, specifically using the word grit, which we are already studying this year, and mentioning Carol Dweck, Angela Duckworth, James Heckman, all the researchers that we have been studying this past year and into this year in our own district. Also, many of the schools talked about adult learning as being instrumental. Our mentor, Dr. Rick DeForre, he talks about either adult learning and student learning go hand in hand, or they don't go at all. And we've been believing in that for a long time in this district, about trying to improve adult capacity. And we heard a lot of schools, Tennessee High School talked about their work with Dr. Bob Aker, which is Rick DeForre's partner, in building success in their school. And Ohio Middle School has followed the teachings of Anthony Muhammad, another Rick DeForre partner. And a lot of the things that we took from the middle school and implemented all the way back in 2005 come from the teachings of Dr. Muhammad, a former Detroit-area middle school principal. And then our keynote address on Monday was given by the former superintendent of the Sanger Unified School District in California. They progressed in California from a failing district, about 55,000 kids, to a high-achieving district, following Dr. DeForre's professional learning community model. A lot of what, some of what we have done in our school is directly taken from the Sanger Unified School District. Very proud to note, you know, I was always asking in these sessions, I wanted to know a couple of things. In an elementary school in South Carolina, I asked them, they had 36 elementaries in their district, I wanted to know, you guys are a blue ribbon, 97% Hispanic, a national blue ribbon school of excellence, is the elementary school next door to you in your feeder area, are they, are you guys united, are you guys sharing, sort of like as a model? And they said, unfortunately, not at all. We noted, while individual schools achieved excellence, we didn't find a whole lot of cross-district collaboration. Another, Silicon Valley out in California, we talked, again, I asked, how is the central office supporting the excellence that you're achieving in your school? And the response was, we've had four superintendents in the last six years, we don't even really know those folks. So while all across, obviously, 286 schools have achieved blue ribbon status by being excellent, we weren't seeing a whole lot of systemness. And that is something that we have been promoting and are continuing to promote in this district, is our idea of systemness as being the degree to which people identify and are committed to an entity larger than themselves. What we talk about as leaders to our teachers in this district, what I talk to the principals about on a daily and weekly basis, everyone must be committed to giving their best in individual and collaborative work, and being aware that everyone must contribute to improving the larger system. If we in Southmoreland are going to continue to improve, we have to enhance our collaborative efforts across the district. We have to support and challenge one another, we have to be better than we were yesterday. Dr. DeForre says, members of a professional learning community are the system individuals seek to create. And that's why, you know, when I went down with John Lee to accept a great honor of being a national blue ribbon school, I really honestly felt, as I said in the beginning, accepting it for everyone. Not just the teachers and folks of the elementary school, but truly, our whole community, parents, board, staff, students, administrator, teachers. We really are trying to be a system across the district, and I really think that the challenges are as difficult as they ever have been, they're not going to get easier. And I think the only way we can continue to address the challenges of improving in our little area of the world is to continue to work together the way we have been, and really challenge one another to be as good as we can be. And again, so I'm just so proud to represent all of Southmoreland, and like I said, a true highlight of my career. I hope there's more.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks very much.
Any citizens' comments? Mr. Kiefer, you've got five minutes for this one, so do you have an additional topic to talk about? If it's dovetailing on here, you already had your five minutes, so is it something different?
Um...
I've been watching this, and I've seen people exercise their right to speak at the beginning and at the end of the session, and I also haven't noticed any time limits on this end of the session. And thirdly, I've checked the bylaws, and the bylaws, from my recollection, don't show any time limits or restrictions to come up here at the end of the meeting. I need about three or four minutes to finish what I have to say, and I'd appreciate that courtesy.
Is it a different topic?
What did you say before that?
Is it a different topic? Because for this card that you submitted, you had five minutes, so do you have a different topic for an additional five minutes?
Yes.
What is the topic?
I'd like to talk about our testing and the Monsanto grant that you accepted, and most importantly, the bullying that I see happening on this board. So, I've got three topics if I could rip into them, and again, I don't see a time limit that I'm willing to accept, but I don't know.
Well, I believe it's five minutes. I'll have the solicitor look into that for next time, I believe, with five minutes.
Well, there might.
Our policy's always been five minutes.
One second. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm glad the microphone's working this time. I want to go back to the October 3 meeting at the ending, when it was getting a little carried away, and I'm really careful not to extract quotes, not to imply meaning, or not to go overboard, but treat others as I'd like to be treated. I speak in public, and I often want to take back some of my words, and I can forgive the comments made and the passion of the discussion, and I like that passion, and I forgive the absence of the gavel and the solicitor stepping in and letting some misconduct pass, but what is not as forgivable is letting this stand, this, what can only be called bullying, and this behavior is, you were made aware of this last week from this same podium. On October 3, at an hour and 33 minutes into the meeting, Dr. Scott was questioning the source of the mission of the makeup, and the makeup of the website, PennCam, and we all have the right to question the sources, I question the sources of the Pittsburgh Business Times that you stand on. But the most fear-provoking words that a citizen activist can hear when challenging power were caught on camera that night. Referring to PennCam, Dr. Scott defined it as a political organization and activist group. He referenced a source, he referenced the source that he trusted, the U.S. Department of Education, and said, whether we support our government or not, and then digressed on, and I want you all to go back and look at that and understand where we are from our shoes when you hear those words. I hear those words in other places in my life. And then farther, at minute 34, talking to Dr. Feig, Dr. Scott said, you know, you sat there and looked almost ill. This comment directed to his superior, his elder, a lady, to me, it was sexist and went way beyond the, where we should be in public as a school. If a student did this, I think he would have been in handcuffs and down seeing Mr. Moore on the same day.
Excuse me, I believe you're delving into personnel issues, so do you have something that pertains to our school district policy?
Uh, yeah. I'm on the testing, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
On the testing, one doesn't need to scour the internet to find the anti-testing curriculum sites, and higher scores bring laurels to the teachers, administration, board members, but they can be harmful to the children in giving them false senses of accomplishment and harmful to the community at large, giving it a false sense of a well school. High-stakes gambling is in its infancy. We don't have 10-year studies that show, you know, where these things wind up, and, you know, how much better the children do when they have their scores a little bit higher than the neighboring school district. The time for memorizing and regurgitating is not in the developing mind, it's in the adult on the job. This last year, I spent a lot of time with people in New York City, I understood what they went through just to get to school, and alone put through, and the culture and language issues, and that, to me, is real poverty, and, you know, we touch on that time and again here, but I still contend that Southmoreland is the Cadillac of school districts to be in socially. You know, statistics or figures lie liars, figures, you know, I pulled a site up, I'm not gonna quote it because I don't want to have it ripped apart, but you see these all the times where United States comes in 21st in math, 15th in literacy, or something like that, worldwide, and, you know, there's a lot of discussion about those things, and I've shared some of that discussion, but the actual difference between the PA schools really isn't that significant in that light and in historical sense, so I'm gonna skip that line, it's just too over the top. So, last thing, how much time do I have, Mike?
Forty seconds.
All right. So, you took this grant from Monsanto. Monsanto is probably, if you Google protest, you'll come up with Monsanto, it's probably one of the most hated organizations in the world, you know, going back to Agent Orange, and now with the GMOs, they're using our students as guinea pigs, they'll, they have no, never shown a three-month study on GMOs, yet the independent people showed three-month study on rats will give you gross tumors and abnormalities. Am I off?
Five seconds.
All right, well, I can't hear them talk, so I'm beseeching the students that they should just take this Monsanto grant, throw it back in their face, and tell them, we don't need that, and if they find out where the money came from, then they'll have to make an ethical decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, for people in the audience and new board members that we have this evening, policy 006, classified meetings, section seven, hearing of citizens. A member of the public present at a meeting of the board may address the board for a time period of up to five minutes in accordance with the board's rules. School board reps, do you have anything to present, or, I know it's a different kind of meeting, so you may not have your report for this month, but if you have anything else you want to contribute? Any board members have anything else?
Appreciation for the staff that reported on the blue ribbon, receiving the blue ribbon commendation, that was very helpful, and just really, sure, it'll be an ongoing after-effects of the meaning of the, really, the achievement that we've had as a district, so just appreciated that report.
Thank you. I'd like to pass on the same, just keep up the good work, and congratulations to the board. If anyone has any board committees that you may be interested in, let me know. If you have any qualifications with those committees, let me know, and hopefully have that for the January meeting. And motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero, with two absent. Thank you, have a good night, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.